I recognize one of the friends with my own secret card.
Okay.
Trish is next. I'm sorry.
I should probably apologize. I listen to all these stories and mine's just another one of those. But I waited 36 years to be up here and so I really have no peace.
Take your time.
My, okay. My father brought my mother and my oldest brother out here in 1944 from Tennessee. And I'm not sure if he worked at Oak Ridge. I don't even know if it was there then. But I know he worked at DuPont back there. And he came down here looking for a new way of life and was real excited about it. And he was very proud to work there. And when I was a little girl and I said, "What did you do? You know, what do you do at work?" And he said, "I can't tell you what I do." It's very secret out there. And so we never talked about it. We never talked about his work. Just every day when he drove off to work, I'd wave goodbye and make him home at night. Well, in 1963, my father's coworker became very ill with pancreatic cancer and died. And my father was very upset about that. I was 13 at the time. That happened in August of 63. In December, he fell ill with what he thought was the flu. He was never sick. I don't ever remember having a cold. My mother has later told me that she thought he was depressed about his friend Dell passing away. In March, the end of March of 64, my father experienced some severe pains. He went to the doctor and they put him in the hospital. This was the beginning of April. And they ran some tests and said they couldn't figure out what was wrong. And he probably just, you know, he was sick. And it turned out he had pancreatic cancer. He ended up going to Catholic hospital and he was in the hospital for 33 days. And he passed away at the age of 46. I remember at one point, and I don't know how long before that it was. I remember him giving send home for work for several days. And in the bathroom, there was a little box that he had to send every day a sample to work, whatever work was. And that I think they did for three days. I don't know whether stool samples or urine samples. And he used to wear his badge. And I used to ask him about his badge. And he said it mentioned radiation. And I thought it was like a thermometer, but he said, "No, it was inside." And they kept his badge because they, I remember him saying he had been, he had gotten too much of something. And I'm assuming it was radiation. Anyway, he did die in May 1st of 1964. And it was very traumatic, of course, because he didn't come off to work anymore. I was very upset about that. The GE newsletters stopped coming. Everything from GE that, you know, he got his safety awards and he got his 5, 10, 15 year pin. And he didn't get his 20 year pin because he died on the 20th year. So I still have the 15 and the 3 before that. But in 1977, my mother received a letter from a doctor, Thomas Menkuso, that he was representing the University of Pittsburgh. And his title was research professor. And he wrote asking her to, it was in reference to a research study being conducted by the University of Pittsburgh Graduate School of Public Health relative to prior employees of atomic energy facilities. And they asked if my mother would take the time to report what happened to my father as much as she could remember. Now, this is 13 years after the fact. And she's kept all these letters and her response as well. So I have that. She said, she told me recently, she suffers a little bit from dementia. And I wondered if you'd come to that, because I wanted to say that. But she has a lot of trouble with the here and the now. But she can certainly remember 1964 and all of that. And she never gets a beat when she talks about it. And it affected my family severely. She mailed off, she said she was afraid to send this information because back then you didn't talk about work and it was scary. You know, we knew, or I guess they knew that there was something going on in the war, but they didn't know what they were doing. And that's something I wanted to say is, seems like some things change and some things happen. Some people are still afraid. And I don't understand that. I mean, I have something to say and I don't care. You know, I'll say it. Anyway, the second letter came after she responded. And it's thanked her for responding and appreciated her time. And it said they were checking into the medical aspect of what she said. And then it said, "We are attempting to evaluate every former worker very carefully. And it's with help from people like you that keeps us going." And that's in April of 1977. And we were nothing. I don't know what, maybe that was just for their own benefit. But nobody ever talked about it, you know? And to have your, have an important person in your life just disappear. And it was like, we didn't know why. I started to leave early because I saw all your cards and I thought, you know, nobody's going to hear what I have to say. But I looked at this form that I was going to fill out. And it seems to be for people that are suffering from things now. This doesn't seem to apply to me. I don't work again. You know, I don't want to work out there. But I don't know, how do I, I mean, how do we get compensated for the loss of a family member? I know you, that gentleman that spoke, you said, you know, he was talking about his brother-in-law. I think it's, I guess I need some answers. You know, I'm not looking for money. I'm looking for some kind of peace of mind. How do we get compensated?
The first, one of the questions you raised was around the letter your mother received in 1977. She really put her heart into that response. I'd never heard anything. But in fact, I'd like you to tell her from me that in fact, her response was very useful. Dr. Thomas Menkuso was a researcher at the University of Pittsburgh. Did a series of very important studies on the health of workers at nuclear weapons facilities. And at least one very, very important study here at Hanford. And that study is one of the pieces of evidence that we sent to the White House to support this effort. So in fact, your mother's contribution is appreciated and was very important.
She hasn't been lost in the shuffle of papers.
But the information she sent in fact was important. It's a shame that no one got back to her to tell her that. But in fact, that was helpful. And hopefully out of this will come a process and a program that we'll be able to bring back to you next year or the year after, whenever it does pass, to address these issues. I can't tell you what details will be moved far from there, but.
Oh, that's good.
If I can do that. But thank your mother for us, for helping her.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trish is pretty good. And Warren Kayes will be next.
Before I begin, I want a second Karen Sutham's talk. Sorry for this conversation. Request for future funding for HHIN and the archives. Especially with this number of people who are newly coming forth with their histories and their health problems from Hanford. I brought several items from the Hanford archives. People may recognize this. This is one of the flags that flew on the boats that went up and down with Columbia in the 50s, the Hanford Navy flag. And tonight is the fourth anniversary of my father's death of thyroid cancer, just by coincidence. And I was actually born here in Richland at Catholic Hospital and grew up about three blocks from here in an F house. I just, I took a reporter with me to visit my house before I came here. And the house looks a lot smaller than it used to now. I want to talk about something just slightly different than what you've heard so far. I am the daughter of two Hanford workers. My father worked at, as an engineer, nuclear engineer from 47 through 60. My mother worked in stores. As I said, my father died exactly four years ago today of aggressive metastatic thyroid cancer, which we believe was caused by his inhalation and ingestion of radioiodine from Hanford. My mother also had thyroid disease, hyperparathyroidism, and died of malignant melanoma, a very aggressive form of malignant melanoma, last March. My brother died in 1947 of unknown circumstances. It's rather confusing as to the cause of his death. He's part of the spike of neonatal deaths that's been looked at by the ATSDR, the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry. That is of four members of my family. I'm the only one left. I have severe thyroid disease and osteometrosis myself. I want to talk about the rest of us, not just the workers. I'm very thankful for what you and Secretary Richardson have done for the workers. And I wish my parents had lived to see this night and be here with me. But by helping the workers, you're dividing my family. Because my, myself and my brother have nothing. We have no monitoring, no compensation, no help, yet we're ill and my brother is dead. So by helping the workers and not the families of the workers who are sick and not the people exposed off-site, the downwinders who've been exposed to significant amounts of radiation, you're dividing our community and you're dividing my family. And that's not right. We've been referred to as the children of the Hanford sacrifice zone. We paid a price as well for the effort that went on to create the bomb. And it's just not right to help only the workers. There are a lot of people who are not here tonight who have already died and who have cancers as well. I'm very thankful for the workers' monitoring program. But we've had a medical monitoring program that was recommended several years ago. And you always, has still not funded that program. Had that program been existing, my father would be alive tonight because the nodule he developed on his thyroid would have been biopsied and they would have detected a cancer. People like me did not sign up to take these exposures. We have no monitoring. We have no healthcare. We have all been kicked out of court because the burden the law places on is to show the causal link between the substances and our diseases. We have no workers' compensation for these injuries. You're collecting evidence for the White House of people who have no workers' compensation for radiation exposures. We are a very large group of people like that. We too have suffered for this country's freedom. We've given our health and offered our lives. We are also Cold War veterans. A bill before this administration leaves which extends beyond the workers to all of those of us significantly injured is what should be in question. Not a bill just for the workers, but please look beyond the workers. Also, please, please treat the people at the different atomic energy sites and the Nevada Test Site equally. We must be treated equally to the Oak Ridge people, to the Savannah River people, to the INDEL people, to those exposed to the Nevada Test Site fallout. Don't divide us. I have a friend who's a Nevada Test Site downwinder who stated simply, "Justice, not just us."
Thank you very much. We're down to about our last eight to 10 before Mr. Kayes. And we'd like to set a goal of trying to get out of here around 10:30. That gives us just under a half an hour. So with that said, again, not trying to rush you, but the end is in sight. Mr. Kayes is up. John Dawson is next. Go ahead, sir.
House Resolution 3418 on the surface appears to be a good compensation measure. It provides medical and wage compensation to the unfortunate individuals whose body lacked the ability to combat the effects of beryllium exposure while working at U.S. Department of Energy sites, including Hanford. A major flaw appears in Section 107, Paragraph B, where it states, "All compensation under this title shall be paid for from the Energy Employee's Beryllium Compensation Fund and shall be limited to the amount available in the fund." CBD and sensitization to beryllium are chronic effects that may not appear for many years. Current screening for sensitization has results of only 50% accuracy. The number of people affected by this exposure will multiply in the future. DOE documents, 10 CFR Part 850, Chronic Beryllium Disease Prevention Program, and medical statistics will show this to be true. Hopefully, the medical specialists will be able to treat the affected individuals and extend their lives. This bill will pay wage compensation, medical bills, and administrative costs on an expanding number of people that hopefully will live longer. How can you create a limited-funded bill to cover all these costs? You can't. The funds must be open-ended because of the reasons I have stated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dawson still here? Oh, this one. While I'm trying to be saying Robert Marton. M R T O F, I think that's his. Kathy Querin. A Richland resident. Is Kathy Querin still here? Oh, I'm sorry. Charles Hendricks will be next.
I'm Kathy Querin. I worked at 222 RAS from 1992 to 1997. I am one of those people that tried to prevent these tragedies. I was invited to a meeting last night with DOE reps to discuss my experience after raising life-threatening safety issues at Hanford. Many others were there to share similar experiences. The disclosures that were made would turn any just man or woman's stomach sour. The retaliation against these people by the DOE and contractors is a ruthless crucifixion. We have, we were asked to focus on the safety culture onsite and its issues. My immediate response was a list of five top issues I had with the Department of Energy. They are, number one, profit is over human life. Number two, propaganda. That safety is number one. Number three, there are no, there is no real help for whistleblowers. With the exception of people like Gap and. But as far as when you're working at Hanford, the places that you are told to go are employee concerns and a DOE hotline. These have been proven to be used for disclosure and damage control. Number four, that corruption and dishonesty are rewarded and a lot, and a lot of times highly rewarded. Number five, the DOE has conceded on the throne of victory over whistleblowers at the expense of the American taxpayer. There are massive funds spent on litigation against whistleblowers. For any union members left tonight, the union did fare much better. In every case I heard last night, the union betrayed the worker and helped the company. This is inexcusable because people have fought and even died to establish unions. And to corrupt it is an atrocity. Understand that whistleblowers risk everything because they still believe that human life is more valuable than profit. The offenses against them are some of the most perverse violations of human rights in America today. There was positive proof in the meeting last night that managers at Hanford were trained to treat whistleblowers as if they had an agenda other than safety. I would like to make my agenda perfectly clear. I firmly believe that all human life should be protected from conception until natural death. I raised serious questions about the safety of pregnant workers and their unborn children, given the high rate of miscarriages and stillbirths along with other health problems in that lab. And the stillbirth and miscarriages included myself. My agenda was to change policies to protect pregnant workers. I was told that the airflow system was protecting me. I was told that there were no chemicals in the lab that could cause reproductive problems. And even though, after nearly five years, I was doing the same except John. And before I made the safe, or brought up the safety concerns, my appraisals were good. Despite that I had a college education and the job I was doing could be done by anyone, including the legally blind. I was grounded as being one of the most, I think it was the worst chemical technician ever in the Hanford district. After I was fired, I learned that glycol ethers were being used in the lab, which they are known to cause stillbirths and miscarriages and other health problems. Women have reported changes in their menstrual cycle to me. There was respiratory problems. The DOE was well aware of this. These ethers have been discussed in the White House for years before I made those claims. Studies had been made and lawsuits were in process at the time that I made those complaints. So let me remind those that are involved in these deceptions and there are deceptions. This was intended to be a nation of God. And this horrible violation of human life is going to demand God's justice. And let me send a strong message to those who make these decisions of profit over life. Not one hair will be left uncounted for those whose lives were cut short or never even born because of these acts.
Charles Hendricks. Patricia Schmidt. See that? David White.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak, Dr. Michaels and Jim. In fact, I think Jim knows my family, no ways back. That's not what I'm going to say though, but I would like to say a little bit of history before I do present my story. I come from a long line of family that lives a very long life. Like 97 years, 98, 101. My father died, my father came here and we did it in 1948. My father died in 1990 at the age of 83. Some people say it's a pretty good life. But if your father lived to be 97 years old, then it's kind of a short life. I lost my mother a year ago today. And she also comes from a long-living family. So I do feel that what has happened here on the reservation is caused, and will probably be the cause of my dementia and probably my sons' and daughters'. I've never worked in the area. I worked for Exxon Nuclear, which is Mount Siemens. I was a process control auditor. And it was, it, we had to go through the whole plant and make sure that the whole operation was going right and being done right. There was, we had a building out there that was called a petroleum plant. And that's exactly what it was. It's a processed petroleum. Us being process control auditors, we would have to go into the building and they had all the machinery that lays and they had to cut these little pellets that goes inside the fuel rods. And it was probably about a 3/8 inch plexiglass cage box that we, that we worked, worked in. And we had rubber gloves. Of course, we put on a white uniform with white shoes. But we did not have any type of protection for our chest, for our body against the petroleum. And you would reach your hands inside the glove boxes and take out a little petroleum pellet and measure it with a micrometer and weigh it. And now and then you would hear the whistle go off at the other end of the room, which meant that there was a tear in one of the rubber gloves that we had arms in, which came up to our shoulders here. And of course, by the time that the whistle went off, we'd only get a coat. And I had just in the last year self-experiencing strange senses going on with me. My voice is one of them. I was a toastmaster for 22 years. And now I've probably been speaking in private groups for more than 25 minutes. My throat is gummy, very gummy. I'm losing my sense of stability. I've fallen down stairs twice, 12 stairs. Last time I had a compression fracture. And I'm not doing a very good job of talking right now because my voice is like, my throat is like, it's got gum and it's been in the way for quite some time. I never really gave it my thought until this project here came up. And I don't think I'm a hypochondriac. I do know there's something wrong with me. My doctors don't know what it is. I don't know what it is. But maybe sometime in the future, we can find out what it is. And I hope that in me getting up here and saying something for the people that did not work this project but was working with nuclear fuels, I hope that this will help them also. And in ending this, I'd like to say that I was sent to Germany and Sweden to train people on fuel, building nuclear fuel, and also forward it to Sweden. And I was hurt at that time. I just said I would finish the job. I came back. Two years later, I was fired. They came to my house and fired me. So I've been traveling longer. And it took me 14 years of fighting laboring industries to get my disability. But I got it. It took 14 years. You have to be persistent, folks. And that's what we're doing here, being persistent. And I appreciate Dr. Michaels listening to us and then taking all this information back to Washington. He's helped some of us probably. Thank you.
It's David White here. Alan Krebs. Randy Walli, W L L I. That being said.
How about Kaye Sutherland?
Sorry ma'am, I didn't see your card.
There's a bunch of people didn't get cards here for some reason. Just call them by hand.
Any free speech?
My name is Randy Walli. I've worked numerous jobs at the Hanford site for different contractors over many years. I grew up in this area. My family's from this area. You know, we lived here and watched the Tri-Cities grow and revolve around Hanford. We've seen a lot of people testify to the pride of this community. It's been a bad experience for me and some of my fellow pipe fitters over the last three years because we took a stance at the Hanford site over some safety issues. We've since been labeled as whistleblowers, which is a bad term for people that concern or are concerned over safety issues or their fellow workers. In my case, I was a pipe fitter for one, the Two Hundred West area. We had some issues that came up over some testing of some new pipe systems we were being putting in. And subsequently, we were terminated. The whole crew that worked for me was terminated. We ended up going through numerous avenues, including lawyers, over a period of time. We tried to go through what we call the Hanford Joint Counsel here, which is an agency that is set up to try to resolve issues here at the Hanford site. Some of the gentlemen that I worked with, we all met with the Joint Counsel, told our stories, trying to get it resolved by keeping it out of court, kind of an in-house deal. The company that we worked for refused in writing to meet with this agency that DOE has set up to handle these issues. We then pursued things through legal systems. The Department of Labor ruled in our favor. The company appealed it. The company, the day before went to trial, settled us out of court. They agreed to take us back under the Whistleblower Acts. We're supposed to be treated fairly. Six months and four days after we were rehired, most of us were laid off again. It's not a big deal of construction people to be laid off. I mean, it's part of our life. We know that the first day we go to work, we're working ourselves out of a job. But to work here at home was an honor. We all, most of us have families, young families. It'd be nice to stay home once a while and work with them, play with them, watch your kids grow up. But because we've been labeled as whistleblowers, we can't work out here anymore. Most of the people out here at the Hanford area, if they do support us, it's around the back door. It's quiet. They don't want to be seen talking to us, but yet they want us to listen to their concerns. A lot of these people that talk here tonight, they have injuries, they have sicknesses. I've heard this lady's story sitting next to me. These are ongoing things that have happened since the forties. We stood up for some safety concerns, numerous different safety issues, to try to help keep people from getting hurt. And these companies don't want to really listen to us. They put on window dressing all the time about safety first. There's no, there's no price tag on safety. But it's all, it seems like it's window dressing. There are some very concerned people working out there, but they're getting harder and harder to talk to and most of them are going into hiding. Because if they bring up a safety issue, they're either demoted or they're replaced. After we were released the second time, we ended up calling the Department of Labor again. They came in, looked at it. They handed down an amazing finding on our behalf again. One of the stiffest findings they've ever handed the company. Six months after they hired us back. And yet, here we are. We're out of work. We're going through it again. The company is now appealed it again. It'll be a matter of time. We'll be back and forth. And we've got a hundred times more evidence this time than we had the first time. We have got truckloads of paperwork, documents that shows malice, cover-ups, how they've treated people that have worked with us. We've got people that were in car pools with us and just because they're associated with us, they got laid off. This is the new atmosphere at Hanford. And I tell you, from people that have grown up here, thought Hanford did a good thing for this country. I mean, this was the town that gave a day's pay to buy a bomber for the war effort. I don't believe that would happen again. You know, and it's a sad thing that you have to have people that have a little bit of backbone and can stand up to a company and take it through the court system to try to make safety work. I know there's some sincere, honest people out there, but they're not upfront. And I just wish that maybe DOE could step in and help the workers instead of the company. We've got proof the DOE Council is helping the company counsel, fight us on our own lawsuits. That means that you people sitting there, your tax dollars are going to the government to help fight ourselves, my own tax dollars. I'm fighting myself. You know, this shouldn't be. DOE is supposed to be out there guiding and ruck-rotting these companies. I think they should step in and either make them toe the line or kick them out of here. Because this is not the way to do business. There's a lot of skilled people out there that know their jobs and are willing to do their jobs. Let's get a company in here that will back the workers. Let's do the work to clean up this mess that we've got sitting in our backyards so that our kids can grow up in a safe environment.
My name is Kay Sutherland. I've been an outspoken advocate for the Downwind people for ten years. Listening to this testimony tonight, it struck me as why wasn't this televised tonight to show this community what they have been through? Why wasn't it televised to show the nation what we have been through? My thought, my husband went, four months ago, my husband went to work at noon. He was a happy man who loved to joke with his friends at work. He told his friends that he felt rather tired that day. He soaked away from the group, sat down in a chair, and his heart stopped, and he died. There was no warning, nothing. Walt had had other ailments, diabetes, skin cancer, blood pressure problems. The list goes on. His father worked out at Hanford, started in their late forties or early fifties. He left for a time and then came back in the sixties and retired there in the seventies or early eighties. He was a pipe fitter. He went home and threw his clothes in the laundry with all the other family members. Out of five family members of my husband's, four are now dead. Four died from heart disease, or four, excuse me. His mother was the only person who did not have heart disease or diabetes in his family. But his mother died of a, of a very severe, fast-growing ovarian cancer. And she died one day after her forty-ninth birthday in nineteen fifty-seven. Walt and I had, have lost six children, four miscarried, two infant mortality. Our daughter was born badly deformed. She had double-cluck feet. She was a probable dwarfism. She had tumors throughout her body, enlarged liver, and other anomalies, and many other problems. The green run, we were told by the DOE, the green run only happened one night, December second and early morning of December third, nineteen forty-nine. It has come to light that the green run was still continuing in the sixties. In September of nineteen sixty-two, right before my getting pregnant with Jennifer, and again in July of nineteen sixty-three, the month that Jennifer was born, they had a small, my move, green run. I am a Holocaust survivor from the American Cold War. We cannot forget the family's children, the children of the workers. We cannot forget the community people or the Downwind community who has surrounded Hanford, whichever the way the wind blew that day that they could have been exposed. All these people are now dying. I'm going to the cemetery to visit my family, my friends. The people I went to school with are now very ill or dead. We know that that one X-ray harmed a fetus. Alice Stewart discovered that in the early fifties. She was also working with Tom Mancuso for the Hanford Workers Study. But radiation released from a nuclear facility has never harmed one worker or one person. Yet we have never been out of the X-ray machine. It has never been turned off. The people in this area have been forced into poverty because they have to retire in their thirties, forties, fifties. Too young to get a retirement, too young to get social security. Too young to have an extended healthcare. They fall through the cracks. They die. I have, over my ten years of being an advocate, I have talked to thousands of people. And many of them, very dear friends, who can no longer fight the fight when there was only a handful of us to begin with because they are very ill or have now died. You have got to stop the old DOE propaganda. You have got to stop the old DOE from saying that it's all in our heads. We have been harmed. We were used as an experiment without consent or knowledge and abused and thrown completely away. And we have been forgotten. The judge hearing the Downwind law case is one of the most prejudicial judges that I've ever heard of. He has limited the litigation to only thyroid cancer, and that's a very limited thyroid cancer, and only a couple of other diseases. And as you know yourself, you have admitted to twenty-two cancers and many other diseases. This man has got to be stopped. He keeps notes and passes them back and forth. And in his courtroom, making fun of, of the people that is in his courtroom, whether they're there to give testimony or on trial or, or one of the attorneys. It doesn't matter. It doesn't make any difference to him. But he makes fun of them. Ye olde Spie and I know, we are part of those notes. We have had our genetics altered forever. Our children, our grandchildren, our children's 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 children have been forever altered. And they need to have some comprehensive healthcare. And we need compensation to take the people out of poverty. There is no safe level for radiation. And we have got to honestly make the DOE tell that to everybody, tell it to the world, because it does harm. I am a product of that. I have been hypothyroid since I was a teenager. My health has been adversely affected from tumors, from strokes, from, from cancers. I now have cancer in both lungs. My husband was supposed to be taking care of me. My daughter moved back so that she would be here for him, not the other way around. I, I thank you for listening to me. And please find it in your heart, not only to think about the workers, but think about all the other families who have been so adversely affected. Thank you.
Somebody else down here? Darla will be next.
My name is Tim McAlvey. I'm a sophomore at Mike and High School. I have concerns about the health of my family and the Hanford workers. Three members of my family are part of the Hanford workforce. My grandpa Jay is an engineer at BNFL. My grandpa Mac was a surveyor and a pipe fitter. My dad was a pipe fitter and now is a chemical technologist at the laboratory. My grandpa Mac has suffered, or has lived in the area since nineteen thirty-two and has worked on and off the site until nineteen eighty-seven, when he was forced into retiring because of his health. Past few years, he has had prostate cancer and numerous skin cancers. I don't know if the cancers were caused by exposure to radiation or hazardous chemicals. I'm now concerned about my father's health and our future. Will he be diagnosed with cancer or develop lung or liver problem or other illnesses in the future? Why is there a bill before Congress to compensate only the workers at Taduka? Should the workers at Hanford site have the same consideration? Also, I have questions for the congressional representative. What are you doing in support of the Hanford workers? Thank you for your time.
Darla, Yum, Yum, Darla? Yum? Okay, are you folks all willing to talk too? Raise your hands if you are.
I feel totally insignificant after hearing everybody else's story, but I have been here since six o'clock and I did turn a card in at six o'clock.
I did too.
So I'm gonna speak anyway. My problems started approximately three years ago. My problems started approximately three years ago. I started having problems with my right arm, and I didn't go numb and wake me up. This was occurring four or five times a month. Within several months, my arms started going numb during the day after extended walking, sick or instrument use. So I went to our site first aid with my complaints, and I was told I probably had tendonitis. I was given an arm brace and told to take ibuprofen as an anti-inflammatory, and returned to work with no restrictions. Over the three years since my symptoms started, I've returned approximately six times to first aid or HGHF. Each time, the diagnosis was the same. Ibuprofen was prescribed and I was returned to work. In June of 99, I once again returned to HGHF with almost constant pain and numbness in my right arm. I'd already missed about 60 hours of work due to pain in my arm since the first of the year, and I was now experiencing pain and numbness in my left arm. I was once again told I had tendonitis and given work restriction. The work restriction was patiently fine and wore my arm brace. The physician's assistant that was evaluating my arm also referred me to Dr. Walter Hales. Dr. Hales is a orthopedic surgeon specializing in arm and upper extremities. After explaining to Dr. Hales my job duties, he examined me and diagnosed me with carpal tunnel syndrome. Dr. Hales explained to me, the constant repetitive motion with my instruments was causing carpal tunnel in my arm, to swell and restrict the nerves that pass through it. At this point in time, I was unaware that the type of work I do could possibly lead to carpal tunnel. I thought this was something the only portion of person's keyboarding on a continual basis could get. Dr. Hales informed me that I had the classic symptoms of carpal tunnel. He even fact-treated numerous people in the HPT field at Hanford for the same problem. Dr. Hales felt that my carpal tunnel would progress to the point where I would require surgery and want to remove my wrist. He referred me to Dr. Dickinson for electromagnetic testing to determine the extent of my condition. When I arrived at this appointment, I was told L and I had approved testing for my right arm only, and this was due to a paperwork error in Dr. Hales' office. Before Dr. Dickinson started the testing, he explained to me that carpal tunnel can be treated very effectively without surgery if it's caught early enough. After the testing, he informed me I had a severe case of carpal tunnel and recommended I have surgery as soon as possible. When the nerves are restricted in this manner for extended periods of time, permanent nerve damage will occur. Dr. Hales performed the surgery on my right hand on September 30th, and plans to perform the surgery on my left wrist around the 1st of November. Lockheed Martin protested my claim in mid-October stating they did not feel it was work-related. My job has not been evaluated to determine whether my condition is work-related or not, and no independent studies have been conducted. As of today, I've been unable to get relief from the pain in my left arm because L and I is holding my claim in abeyance until I have an independent medical exam in mid-February. My private insurance refuses to authorize surgery for my left arm as they view carpal tunnel as an occupational injury. L and I denies my claim and my private insurance will authorize the surgery. To date, I have found out, they have done, on one of my coworkers, they came out and did an ergonomic study, and the ergonomists out of Yakima determined that the job that I do is at risk for carpal tunnel. Well, between Lockheed Martin and L and I, they decided that wasn't a very good opinion, so they got him together with Dr. Schneck, and they did another review of the health physics job, and they decided, well, no, it can't cause carpal tunnel. And now, as I stated before, I'm being sent to Seattle to try to explain my job and how I perform my job to a physician that's never practiced medicine. She got her medical degree and went to work for L and I. How is that an independent medical review? The problems that we have with L and I aren't something that are just of the past, they're ongoing. This company is using our tax dollars instead of to help us with medical benefits to fight the treatment that we're getting in medical benefits. I also, in, three years ago, I requested that I put on the beryllium study because of the beryllium tools that I work with on a continual basis in the tank farms. After six months of arguing with HGHF on whether I should be on the beryllium program or not, because in their estimation, beryllium tools are not at, you're not at risk for getting beryliosis from the beryllium tools. All the research that I did on the beryllium tools, the production workers that make the tools, most of them have beryliosis. Anyway, the first test that I had two years ago came back negative. When I was tested again in September, I came back positive for beryliosis. I don't know, beryllium sensitivity, excuse me, I don't know where that's gonna lead or what'll happen there, but I think that everybody that I work with should be aware that if you have worked with the beryllium tools or you've been exposed to the dust from the beryllium tools, you should be requested to be put on the beryllium screening program, and that you should be able to be on the program. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kathy Orchow. By profession, I'm an industrial hygienist and a registered nurse. I worked at Hanford for a number of years, and I'm currently employed by the University of Washington's Former Hanford Worker Medical Monitoring Program. I would like to say, however, for the record, that my statement tonight doesn't reflect views of the university or of our program, but only my personal opinions and experiences. During my career, I've had the opportunity to talk with many Hanford workers, both current and former, about their work experiences, their exposures, and their health concerns. And I'd like to just briefly touch on three major areas of concerns that I have heard over the years from workers. First, there are many current workers who feel that their past exposures have not been adequately characterized or addressed. These past exposures may have occurred at other DOE sites, or in a prior job at the same DOE site. Historical or past exposures are very important because there are many occupational diseases that don't manifest themselves until long after exposure. If past exposures are not recognized, proper medical surveillance and protective measures won't be provided for workers. I believe this is an area where there needs to be significant attention focused for our current workers. Second, you've heard lots of stories tonight about radiation exposure, so I'm not going to go into much there. I would like to note that I have spoken with a number of former workers who have internal depositions of radianuclides, that is, radioisotopes that they have breathed in, they have swallowed, or that have entered their body through an open wound on their skin. And many of these workers have strong feelings that they've just been abandoned by DOE. They have a lot of concern about their health, some have health conditions that may or may not be related to their internal depositions. No one from DOE followed up with them after they left employment. No one seems to be able to tell them what they should do, where they should go, or what kind of risk this poses for them in the future. So this is a group of workers that I think also definitely merit our attention and care. And third, there are Camp Hanford veterans, or orphans, I like to call them. These were Army troops who were stationed at Hanford from the 1940s into the 1960s, and their job was to provide security as well as anti-aircraft surveillance. They were, in fact, for a number of months to years, housed in tents out in the 200 area where the chemical processing plants are located. So they may well have had very significant exposures to stack emissions and to some of the agents inside the processing plants. These veterans do not appear to qualify for the VA's Atomic Bits Program, and they are not currently covered by the Hanford or other DOE site former worker medical programs either. So there appears to be a need to include these troops in some type of compensation or medical services program. That concludes my statement. Thank you.
My name is Tamara Wilson. My name is Tamara Wilson. I'm from Japan. My mother is from Alaska. I came here to gather information, and as I heard people talk, I realized that my mother may be a candidate for workless compensation. She worked out at United States Testing from 1968 to 1978. She handled the dosimetry badges for all the workers who came in and had them tested and gave them back to them on every work on a monthly basis. My mother quit work in 1978 and moved to Yakima, Washington. She came down with cancer, I believe 10 years later, breast cancer, had a breast removed, went to chemotherapy for a year. After that, she came up with certain situations with pleurisy of the lung. She has diabetes where she has four injections a day. She's been in and out of the hospital at University of Washington ever since she's had cancer, with unknown situations that they cannot seem to find out what's wrong with her. Right now, she's in a situation where she has what they think is called diabetic neuropathy. It's where the nerves die in her body, and she is in a situation, she was forced to retire at 58 years old, she's now 63. She's fallen in the cracks of Medicare because she can't get insurance in a situation to cover it. As of last month, my mother's paying $800 a month in order to just keep the pain down. I had her in the hospital last Sunday where they just keep injecting her with morphine and then send her home. I'm just here in this situation, my mother's never been blamed anybody for anything, she worked out there, she left, and I've just heard so many things, my mother's grandparents or my mother's parents are still alive in 1984 and very healthy. So, again, her name is Dee Dee Seale, and I'd like her to reconsider if there is a situation where they find out that radiation is causing illnesses because she's kind of in a position now where she's not really living, she's just existing. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say, and apologize to some of you who are waiting on, I think this may be relieving to others here, we just received about 25 warm cards that actually were put in an envelope outside. If there, I'm not gonna read them all, I see a few of the people standing here, if there's anyone else who would like to speak, well, just, y'all have to stand up, we'll get to you. But for these four, than anyone else, keep going.
Thank you. Give me an hour, I'll be mercifully brief. My name is Tamara McAdley, and I am a librarian and manager of the Hanford Health Information Archives. We are a project of the Hanford Health Information Network, which as we mentioned earlier this evening, it's a federally funded program, and we are located, the Archives is located at the University of San Jose. I wanted to tell you, and those in attendance tonight here, about a significant portion of the Archives' collection. Our holdings, which are available online, and I'll give you that information in a minute, include occupational records, medical records, oral histories, similar to many of those we've heard tonight, personal recollections, photographs, and other scanned images of Hanford workers, children of Hanford workers, and their families, Camp Hanford workers, military personnel, and others who have lived in the exposure area from 1944 to 1972. The time period is determined by the authorizing language of our family legislation. And here simply to encourage anyone who is interested to consider donating their oral history or medical records or any other significant documents to the Archives. You can contact us at our website at www.hia.org, or through our toll-free phone number at 1-800-799-4442. Your stories are very important, and we in the Archives want to ensure that they are preserved for the sake of those who come after us for current research, for the benefit of future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marty Arson, and I worked out in the area over, often on four, five years. Sorry? Okay. And I went on disability in 1995, but fortunately, I took the advice of my doctor and took disability or other than big layoff that they had come. And I've been on disability ever since with what they described as chronic fatigue. I'm about one highway out between here and the University of Washington and Seattle, trying to find out what's really going on. One of my problems is thyroid, hypothyroidism, and they found a myriad of other problems. Nothing clear, never been able clearly to diagnose it. I've been working in radiation zones since I was 20 years old. I started in '62 in the shipyards, working Hudson's. So I've had a long, very career of a lot of radiation exposure. I was under the old AEC guidelines for years in the early 70s, working commercial power, where you could get your quarterly dose and one day, go back two days later, the next quarter, you get your quarterly dose again. And the commercial side, they did that to people. My concern is, the reason I did get up to speak tonight, and I was not going to until I started hearing some of the horror stories, I also had a hearing loss, and I asked around, and I'm glad I did beforehand, because I was advised to be careful of who I went to for medical clinic for my hearing loss, because there are some of the hearing clinics that are asking to you to sign an agreement prior to being tested, to sign over part of your L and I claim, as much as a third to that plan, if you get a favorable plan. Well, this is bordering on, I'm not sure what you call it, malpractice, but it's a very shitty situation. I noticed that there's been a myriad, just about every hearing clinic within a 50-mile radius is sending pamphlets to people in the area to come in for a free hearing test, and part of this agreement is, and I was fortunate, I picked an agency that did not do that. But this gets me back to another subject that came up earlier. What happened to HGHF along the way? I remember when I came here 25 years ago, it was a heads-up outfit, if you had a healthcare problem, they tried to help you and tried to steer you to the right doctors, so you got some care. And if they couldn't help you, they would make sure that you found good physicians to help you. That's gone. And as one fellow said, as you get older and you get away from the radiation zones and all the hazardous jobs, they cut you back on your annual physicals, once every three years, or once every five years, and then you get sick, and there's nobody around to help you or advise you. As a matter of fact, one of the, one of the downsides when I went on disability, fortunately, I did not take the comments and advice from one of the HGHF members, who said, "Why don't you take, why don't you go for a layoff and take all the money?" And I was smiling. L and I has become a pitfall for a lot of these people, and you've heard horror story after horror story. Is there not a way in this system where you could shortcut that? Instead of us, who have worked on federal reservations, having to go back to a state we said have nothing to do with, or have any interest in what we've done, other than we're another body that they can make money on through their agency to launder money through? Can't you shortcut that and make it a more efficient system so that you get better coverage for the individual and save money from DOE as well? I think you can. Back to the people making money, this is getting the money game for the attorneys too, and all these people being disabled. The only agency that I see that regulates this, and I had to hire an attorney after getting out of disability for two and a half years and shut mine off, they said, "Well, you're gonna go prone to disability now, so we gotta analyze you to determine if you really are disabled." Well, they spent eight months, nine months, I think it was 10 months between checks, before they decided that I was really disabled. They paid me all the way back, but there's 10 months without that affiliation, without the program being, like, just a long-term disabled employee. And in that time, I was still in social security, you know, Medicare, which now is saving grace. Coming out of that, I learned that the Social Security Administration regulates how much an attorney can get, so an attorney can't clean you out on your disability benefits, whereas the private benefits, if you're trying to get those back, is buyer beware again. So a person such as myself who has some difficulties with his private clients through the sign up, who's supposed to be the health insurer for the Hanford workers or any of us Hanford workers. We have to go out here and... We have to go out here and go through the wilderness of attorneys and hope we don't get raped too bad in the process and gain an attorney to help us get through the disability mess. And I would hope that you find some way for us in your own agency. Maybe you need to adopt some of the Social Security Administration's guidelines in those areas so that people can get the shaft because of that. And it isn't a big moneymaker for some of the attorneys, as it is right now. The one comment I heard tonight that stuck was, "We need well-educated healthcare specialists to help those of us who are really affected." In other words, I'm sure that there's a concern for the people who want to get free lunch. There's a lot of us that work hard for a lot of years. We're not looking for free lunch. We're not looking for a lawsuit and a big money claim. And we don't want to be left with nothing, with no health to be able to go get another job. We want enough to at least get by and live a dignified life for what's left of it. And I think the vast majority of these workers feel the same way. They don't want some big claim. They don't want a whole lot of other, you know, amenities. They just want their basic life and be able to live it out in peace and, you know, the best they can do with what they have, with some good, well-educated healthcare specialists to help them along the way so they can get the best of what they can. Now, a comment was made about CEREX. I want to tell them--
Sir, I think, I want to--
Yeah, I want to pass one on. CEREX, I learned about those CEREX in 1973. That was 27 years ago when I was working in commercial power. So that information's been out there for a lot of years.
Thank you.
I need you to take advantage of me, David. Thank you very much for coming out to our lovely state, the other Washington. I'm Tim Takar, with the University of Washington, former worker program. We have been examining, investigating exposures in production and non-construction workers. And I was very glad to hear from Rick Burden about the construction worker results. I'd like to very briefly describe some of our results in the first thousand workers that we've examined, first thousand workers that we've interviewed in the first 600 exams. Very briefly, we've asked approximately 75,000 workers, or in the process of asking for their work histories to evaluate exposures and possible health hazards, primarily from asbestos exposure, beryllium exposure, and noise exposure. In the process though, we've gathered information on other exposures, and we, in this first thousand workers, found over 600 workers who worked with radiation, not a big surprise, but over 500 who worked with both uranium and plutonium, almost 500 exposed to noise, 400 exposed to acids and asbestos, 400 exposed to fluorine salts. All of these very significant exposures with known health effects. We've conducted about 600 exams, and these exams, again, are for asbestos, beryllium disease, and noise-induced hearing loss. We've found a phenomenal amount of illness in this voluntary program so far. About half of our x-rays are abnormal. These range from pleural plaques to pulmonary fibrosis to lung tumors. Again, I find that the number of over 50% abnormal despite the fact that it's a voluntary program to be quite surprising. 5% of our workers examined for beryllium disease are positive. 78% of the workers examined for hearing loss have significant hearing loss, which is compensable under workers' comp system, and 20% have abnormal spirometry. One of the issues that you will have to deal with, and we all in occupational health have to deal with, is that of attribution. How do you assign a particular illness to a particular exposure? And it's very clear that that will not be possible in most cases. The courageous workers that you've heard from tonight are workers who served the country at a time when the country needed them, and they're in a place now when they need the country to serve them. This means that attribution should not be a requirement. Compensation programs in the Veterans Administration operates on a system where if an exposure can be shown and a disease endpoint is demonstrated, that attribution is not an issue. And I think especially with hazards such as asbestos, where you have four years of asbestos exposure in your Navy experience, 10 years of asbestos exposure in your rocket dining experience, 25 years of asbestos exposure in your Hanford experience, attribution becomes a moot issue. And I would suggest that for each of these hazards, where a hazard can be demonstrated, an exposure demonstrated, and an illness which can be linked to that hazard demonstrated, that attribution be dropped as a requirement. Finally, I would mention workers' compensation system. We have recently undergone a significant change here in Washington State for Department of Energy workers, and that is a change from labor ministries, which is in the lines here tonight. But I would venture to say that if you were in Tennessee, you would have a different story to say. In this current system, what we have been told by the third-party administrator for workers' compensation is that not only must current workers go through their contractor to file a claim, but former workers must go through the current contractor to file claims. My understanding is that this is not legal under Washington State law. And I think this should be examined closely. It is very onerous for workers to have to file a claim through their employer, especially in the case where their employer, in fact, Westinghouse for example, or DuPont prior to them, is no longer here. I just would urge that your office examine this requirement, not only for our former worker programs, but also for the current workers. It's not reasonable to have a worker have to go to his employer to file a workers' compensation claim. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Anderson. I'm here representing my mother, who can't be here right now. This has to do with my dad, who was a Hanover worker, started in the late 40s. In fact, he had a positive disease, diagnosed in the 1980s. The thing I can remember also about all the issues that was around my dad's employment is the fact that many times I looked up on the top of the dresser, and was getting married, seen this film badge, totally overexposed. His reply was, "Only taking care of it." You get a big job, and you appreciate your time significantly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Go ahead and come on up, please. Les, you're next.
My name is Bob Masak. I worked at Hanford, 200 West, 234th, 95, in 1983 and 1986, when I took it over retirement. I'd like to bring your attention to incidents that I was involved in in 1987, when we were in production. I want to share this with you, Dr. Mike, in a few little minutes. This is a concerns, an episode involving the release of carbon tetrafluoride transfer operations in 1987. At about 9:00 PM on August 27th, which I was on a swing shift, I was transferring carbon tetrafluoride from a 55-gallon drum to tank in a chemical makeup room, which is the same room that I had exposure in. When the 55-gallon drum got empty, and the pogo pump, which I was transferring with, started making a bunch of noise, I figured it was time to shut the pump off and change barrels. But I went around the other side of the room, that is probably 25 or 30 feet away. I noticed a mist and liquid on the floor, and the drum, on top of the drum, was full of liquid. I immediately told my helper to get out of the room, to shut the air off, and left The room was equipped with a carbon tetrafluoride alarm, which is set for three parts per million, which I was on the equation of possibly working. They never told it wasn't. A few minutes after I went into the control room, we reported to my manager what had happened. I started getting nauseous and felt sick, so I went down to the restroom downstairs and started to vomit. After that, I went back up to my control room, almost sick by the way it happened. He asked me if I wanted to go home, and by this time, I was getting pretty well nauseous. They were trying to get me out of the wackey and blurry. And I told him I don't think I could make it. So he said, "Well, you better go down to the chamber and get changed and see if somebody could take you home." And the last thing I can remember is starting to walk out of the office and headed towards the elevator. And we got on the elevator, and I can remember two people trying to hold me up. And that's the last thing I remembered. And for the records I accumulated through my searching around, this happened about 9:15. And nobody really after everything, it was three or four days later, and I started putting pieces together, and nobody would tell me nothing what really happened, until I got the personal report from the AGHF, the hospital report, which I got through the lawyers, and expert witnesses, which the lawyers got some more information for me on. And nobody could really come up with how much exposure I really took. And that appears here, was published in a twice-edited herald. And this, in order to read one statement, this was put out by, says, "Westinghouse officials were unable to determine exactly how much of the chemical the worker was exposed to, but the symptoms exhibited are consistent with doses between 100 to 200 parts per million, which is大于5, parts per million." And after I got my records, and found I talked to my wife later on, she, I guess she showed up to the hospital somewhere, maybe 12:00 and 12:30 for her, and she said I was kind of still coherent, and she saw me at 12:30, but he left her in the scene. And one thing that got me that I couldn't figure out, is what happened between 9:15 and 11:45 until I got to the hospital, and it took so long to get to the hospital. And I still have never, just through some of the HPTs at the time that were there to see, he said I was convalescent and vomiting at the mouth, and I guess they said I was in pretty bad shape at the time. That was one reason why they were moving until I was stabilized. So I really concerned. So when I, going back to that, I woke up about 4:30 then, following morning. It was on the 27th. And then I realized where I was, and I heard a lot of deep and there's sounds going on, and I heard that they told me I was going to get some care. But after I, so they released me, and I guess they said I was stabilized enough to go and release me, that my hearing that day, following day, which was on a Saturday, because this happened on Friday evening. So Monday, they told me to report to AGHF, which I did. They released me to go back to work. And then I was supposed to have followed for blood tests and urine tests. And then I had one, as far as I can record, as I can find, I had one blood test, one urine test, within six months, and that was the last I had to do there. So I'm really concerned, since I left out there and the things down the road is, how do I know what the future has for me? And if I have to go get help or see someone, to find out before something serious does happen, because this is a liver, for a engine, it's all internal organs that are involved, your lungs, your livers, and all these things that are involved, which I could go and get help and keep a check on. Now, I haven't had, nobody since I left Hanford has even bothered to know how I was and what's happened or nothing. And this is one of my big concerns.
Thank you. I think it would be very important for you to be in touch with the former worker about the surveillance program.
Nobody's ever told me. All I can see is that's my contact to be able to keep track of. Because I, between this and the radiation exposures I've taken over the years, but I did work on everything in 234th, 95, and I'm more, I think, concerned on this with carbon tetrafluoride than anything like that.
I think if you call our ring number, we can make sure to get you in touch with the people that can offer you that, that whole donation.
And one thing I'd like to bring to attention to some of the people here, you can't take nothing for granted on monitors, because after, I would like to give you a copy of this investigation report that came out afterwards, and that's the first time I knew what was going on and I can't get real. And this tells that the caller in Ted Monitor had been working for six months. The books were around to tell them about it, and that we were never told that the, it raises an assumption that Sniffer in there was working. So when the carbon tetrafluoride did go off, nothing happened.
No, I need it with that. I think we're up to go to move to the next speaker. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you. Bless you, Rob.
I'll tell you, there's a few brave souls left in this house today, and I appreciate it very much. This is going to be very, very brief. After being discharged from the Army as a combat veteran in the infantry, I went to work in Hanford General Electric Company on August 14th, 1947. I worked approximately, I was trained as a nuclear chemical process operator. I went to work at the P-words plant shortly after it started up. I was in this complex for approximately five years. I then transferred to the building 234H5 for the construction period and for the startup of this plutonium-producing and finishing complex. Excuse me. I remained in the 234H5 building for approximately 25 to 30 years. We were exposed to all elements of a plutonium production facility where plutonium was molded into weapons components. In addition to the plutonium, I was exposed to uranium, beryllium, nitric acid, and a variety of other radioactive or highly toxic substances. I was in a criticality situation in building 234H5 during a routine filler change when contamination control was lost. I received at that time 75% of my lifetime internal deposition of plutonium. I was one of the first nuclear operators to receive a chelating substance injected into my veins, which was used in hopes of reducing the ingested plutonium in my body. According to my last whole-body count, this procedure had reduced my lifetime internal deposition to approximately 35 or 40%. During my tenure at Hanford, in addition to my exposure to plutonium, I was exposed to asbestos on a routine basis and have been diagnosed with-- to asbestos on a routine basis and have been diagnosed with asbestos. After much deliberation with the Department of Labor and the Street My Workers' Compensation Claim for January 10, 1982, has been allowed to remain open for the purpose of monitoring the claim with an annual physical. In addition to the plutonium exposure, this claim also includes my asbestos. I would just like to say, I would like to thank Dr. Michaels, Jimmy Hall, and all these people who have sweat through this afternoon or this evening. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much.
I think we're going to bring, we're approaching 11:30, and Adam gives the last word to Dr. Michael. Oh, okay.
My name is Sammy Turner. I started out in Hanford, Washington, in September '80. And I was a janitor out that way, and I was working on 234-95. Everybody familiar with 234-95? And it was kind of like they sent me out there for a sign on the backside of 234-95. Got there, and they told me we needed to go to the backside. So I went to the back, put on my wipes and everything to the backside, and then went through the air door. When I went to the air door, it just took my air away from me, just like I just blacked out. And I was stumbling around, and I just stumbled on door 137, and it made a security violation that said west area, down east area, down everything down. They took me to an office and asked me what happened. I asked them what happened to me. They said that there was a security violation. So I said, "Well, it was two choices I had to make, die or take door 137 out." So I took door 137 out and I blacked out on the ground. And next thing I knew, we revived back up. I was gun pointed. My officers, they asked me what was I doing? And I told them, I said, "I just passed out right here. I don't know what's going on." So they took me, they called my parents, told me to go to the HGHF and take a physical. Went there, took a, they told me I don't use the bathroom that morning. So I went there, and I got up this morning, and I used the bathroom, you know, headheaded. And so I said, "Well, I'll stay here till about 11 o'clock, and I'll, we have to use the bathroom this morning to get urine." So I said, "Well, I got to get back to work." So I went to Cali Medical Center over here and gave her a physical. Cost me $137. And so then I went back to work, and then they called my parents, and they told me that we're going to lay you off because you failed to take a physical. And I went and took my Cali Medical Center. I figured, you know, my insurance would cover it, long as it's happening the same day or whatever day they detect, and they go get information from Cali Medical Center, because they're still doctors. And so I said to myself, "Well, I haven't been physical out yet." You know, I'd been exposed back there, and they just took my December and told me, "He hit on down the road, we don't want to see you no more." So I've been here suffering, and I feel, I know how these people's feeling about suffering, and I figured it's going to take more of the DOE to get this to Washington, to the President. Before you do the office, of course, going to be the President, and I would like to see them pass this issue here, Gore and Januarino, and this, the DOE to decide that these people's quit suffering. You know, that's my final word there. Thank you, Paul. Thank you very much.
I just want to thank everybody for extreme patience, and I'm going to give the last word to Dr. Michael.
First, I want to thank Jim Hall. He's been working very hard all evening. He's had a great deal of patience. Keith Klein, manager of the Richland Office, representatives of both Senator and State here through the evening, listening to this. My staff has been very patient listening, and most of all, all of you. Dr. DeCary is very courageous. I think courageous really is a fitting term for all the people who came up here to speak. It's difficult to speak in front of big audiences. It's especially difficult to speak in front of big audiences if you've never done it before, if you're sick and maybe you're a little scared about talking about people. It took a lot of courage for all of you to come out and do that. We're very grateful. All of this information will go to the White House, to the President, to Congress, and we hope out of this will come a program that addresses the needs of workers, not just in Hanford, but across the whole complex. On behalf of Secretary Bill Richards, I'm very grateful to all of you for coming, and thank you again.
So when are you back in DC?
Tomorrow.
Oh, really?